LLC, Day of Caring, that's also included. A bond release, Thompson's Gas Farm at the lakes at Martinsburg, grading BCP file 2208-251 tied to BCP file 2208-250, number 85-03 and 2104-0371. And that's a grading bond. And the bond number is 8001013619. That's recommended by the engineering department. Any questions for Doug on that?
What's the tank farm? Is that the big thing or?
Yeah, it's not my fault. It's a tank. It's a small, not like. I don't know what's up there in Southern state.
What's it supposed to serve?
The lakes.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So all the houses in there?
It's all metered. It's metered propane, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, it's metered propane at every house who desires it. Okay. Are you? Any other questions? If not, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second?
So good.
All those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. I have a correction of assessment log on the Honorable Larry Hess. We have 13 personal property tax exonerations for office error. And a couple more.
Good morning.
Good morning, Larry.
Yeah, that's what we have first on the agenda here was 13 personal property office error corrections we had to make for the reasons that's listed there. And most of them are double billed, which we get a lot of them double billed. And I keep asking the girls out front, why? I think it's because of the files. The files are out. If the files not in order, they pick it up, they have to make up a new bill. It winds up being another exoneration. But since we've scanned everything, we shouldn't have that problem. Put it up on the computer, it should be right there. So hoping that'll correct all that. Which we are done, by the way. Yeah, they're scanning done. So we got these 13 personal property exonerations with a total value of...
Oh, looks like a thousand seven forty one ninety seven.
Correct. Thank you. Sure.
So do I have a motion to approve the personal, or I'm sorry, 13 personal property tax exonerations for office error?
So moved.
Have a motion to have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And three real estate exoneration.
Yeah, we had, we had three that didn't get homestead applied. We found that when they were doing some proofing. So we had to go back and correct those for three years. Total of $720 and six.
Have a motion to approve the three real estate tax exonerations due to office error for the amount of 720.06. Have a motion to have a second? And any further discussion?
You have homestead not applied on real estate. Then you have homestead not applied on personal.
Yeah.
So the personal's like a trailer?
Right, it's a boat hole. Yes.
Larry, how far, how many years back would you go?
We don't like to go five, more, more than five. We don't like to do that. Most of the counties will do that. They'll go five years. We don't like to unless it's definitely something we did wrong. We had, you know, it's, but we'll go back to five. We've always done that. No it's, but we'll go back to five. We've always done that, no further than that, except for we'd had a couple that, you know, had to go back. Did you guys made decisions to go back further?
Yeah, like the guy with the siding situation.
Yeah, that was twenty-two years, I think, on that one.
Is the homestead a office error, or is that an error because they didn't buy for the homestead?
No, no, they, they've already had the homestead, they just didn't get it online or gets taken off. On personal property, if you don't rekey that in there every year, it won't show up. Real estate rolls over, you don't have to worry about that.
Would that be fixed with the new system? Would it stand there?
No, no, we have the new system, and it's kind of worse than the one we had before, but no, it's still the same.
Just for the record, Mr. Boyd, that's a state computer system, not a local computer system.
You know, you're upgrading the system, you think it's going to be better, right?
Supposed to.
The state hasn't allowed us to take over their system yet to quell their flash.
I could tell you some stories about that, Gary could tell you, because he knows.
We'll send this video right down to Charles.
I was just, I was just thinking, we upgraded from the folders to the online thing, scanning stuff. I didn't know if that made a difference.
He's more talking about the assessment system that he uses, not necessarily his paper storage system.
Yes, that should correct the fact that everything's on a computer. You don't have to look in files and get mixed up or whatever. Should correct a lot of that.
Now, call for the, do we call for the question on that one? I don't think you did any, you didn't get a motion in a second. We're ready. Okay. All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And one apportionment of assessment per final divorce decree, I guess.
Yes. Yes, for Mr. and Mrs. Eden Lortino, they had two vehicles, total assessed value of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. And we split their bill up, and each one got a, got the assessment. Whitney got the Toyota at six thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars of the assessment. And Anthony got the Jeep at fifteen thousand seven hundred and five dollars. I just need your approval, so we could get them sever billing.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, for the apportionment of assessment of taxes per final divorce as presented? Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Does that end? Board of meeting reports. Mr. Boyd?
Well, we had a Main Street meeting this week. Seems to be a good bit going on over there. They have that new passport program being used pretty heavily, especially with the new events. St. Patty's Day event, they got a lot of new people signed up. It provides coupons and discounts and check-ins at different local businesses downtown and around. In total of five hundred and seventy total redemptions this year since it kicked off. Five hundred and ten check-ins at locations. So it seems to be working well and getting people signed up. That's one of those things where they get alerts and notices for discounts and come visit places and that sort of thing. So that's, that's a good thing. They have the wine festival coming up. They still need a few volunteers, if anybody wants to volunteer in the public. But they almost have it filled up, and this year the legislation did fix the wine rules, so it'll be able to operate more smoothly. You have to purchase your bottles of wine and open them on premise, unlike the past, like last year when things really went awry. Legislation did a good job of getting that, that rule fixed, and so it should run well. And actually, this year, distillers can participate. Not purchase, you can purchase, but you can't have those consumed. They'll be waiting for you at the gate. You pick it up when you're only waiting your car to go home. So I believe they can sample, but they cannot sell. And if you choose to purchase from them, your bottle will be waiting when you exit the... Yep, so things were going on there. They were getting things started and had some meetings coming up about the ambassador program. I spoke about the CVB sponsored through the city. Seem to be excited about that, think it's going to be a good thing. That's pretty much what's going on down there.
Anything else?
Um, I did meet with Randall Reed last week for our meeting here. Still working hard to help us with different projects throughout the county and the Apollo and the Roundhouse and different things like that. So there's a good things going on.
Very good. Mr. Bernhardt?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I had a board of health meeting on Monday. It was in Berkeley Springs, but I decided not to go. So I was on Zoom.
Lovely.
Yeah. And it was all staff reports. And I'm not driving to Berkeley Springs to listen to staff reports. So that's why I was on Zoom. And the staff reports were pretty routine, except the epidemiologist had a couple of interesting stories. He had reports of several cases of measles, which is kind of interesting in light of the legislature and the governor, you know, relaxing of the rules. But it turned out that it was not measles, so that sort of died away. And then he had another case of a family in Berkeley County, got Camplobacter from raw milk.
Got what?
Camplobacter, it's a...
Bacteria?
Yeah, it's bacteria, foodborne. From raw milk. But it turns out the raw milk was bought from a Maryland farm. So that kind of, and there were no other cases, but of course, that all fell into the great state of Maryland to sort it out. I haven't heard anything about what Maryland found, what was legal and what was illegal.
How does that work on you? The bacteria, digestive?
Yeah.
Okay.
Trips to the john. And that was, that was pretty much a meeting. And of course, the infamous Layla Levy meeting
Mr. Catlett?
Yes, sir. Tuesday was my busy day. I had a sewer board meeting. Yeah, there's been a lot of work going on in the sewer district with the pumping stations out in the Hedgesville area. And of course, growing up in the town of Hedgesville, for some reason, even though it's elevated and it drains all towards Back Creek, the town of Hedgesville has issues with, with groundwater, particularly during heavy rains.
They have for many a year.
Many, many, many years.
But in their collection system?
Well, yeah, as it drains towards Back Creek, the town running.
Unfortunately, though, it shouldn't affect our sewer system if things are working properly. And so there's a study going on now to try to figure out, because the only time there's issues there is when there's heavy rains.
Well, infiltration's got to be terrible into there. I remember, remember many years standing at the Town Spring, and you could hear the town sewer running while you're standing there at the Town Spring. Needless to say, I had a discontent, took the handle off the pump at Town Spring, but...
Well, you know, they're working on a study to try to figure out what can be done on, on the sewer district side to try to correct the problem. I'm not so sure there's issues on the public side as well, but hopefully at some point we can get it addressed. But, you know, the new pump stations, there are six of them that are being installed, and several of them are already in working order. Will increase the capacity of that system tremendously, and with the growth that's occurring out there, obviously, it's needed. On the stormwater meeting as well on Tuesday evening that followed, frustratingly, frustration still prevails in the fact that the state has not come out yet to release their new statewide MS four permit for the entire state of West Virginia for review. Keep getting promised every week that it'll be out soon, and we're still waiting to see the result of the MS four permit. And obviously, it affects our situation. So hopefully, things will break loose here soon. The other meeting that I attended Tuesday evening was that the Board of Education was certainly the highlight of my week. They voted unanimously to turn over the D nine oh-one property to the county. So once that's done, here in the next few weeks, we hope, we'll be able to enter into an agreement with the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield Foundation and to create nine oh-one property as the hoax-run battlefield recognized national site, Civil War site. So it's a wonderful thing, and we're moving in the right direction. I didn't have any other meetings, but I did one, I don't know if y'all have had time to look at the West Virginia Criminal Justice data snapshot thing that came out to us in an email. It's, it's really interesting. There was three thousand deaths in West Virginia in the criminal justice side in 2022, and only a hundred and nineteen are homicide. More than triple that was suicide, more than double that was alcohol-induced, and then double that, the most was, of course, drug overdoses. And of course, fentanyl and tramadol is the two leading causes for our drug overdoses. So it's a really interesting report, and it compares West Virginia, obviously, to the national standards. And please take time to review it. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Eddie?
Yes, sir. I'll be a little bit here. On Monday, I was on WRNR radio with Hunter Wilson, the chairman of the Fire Board, answering questions and explaining fire fee increase. Tuesday, Parks and Rec, I had a number of folks come in and oppose the pickleball site that, that we've been working with, with the city, and also the skateboard area because of the flooding in that particular area, which we know is, you know, during heavy rainfall, it does lend itself to flooding. Also, with Parks and Rec, the spring camps are opening up. May eighteenth will be a fishing, family fishing day at Forehouse. They got the concert series all set up for out to War Memorial. Green Mills Park construction, they have the drawings, they have the billion package already in, and they're getting some public comment on the playground to be installed there. Millennium Pools will be opening up the pools with Lambert and War Memorial, and we should have water in Lambert by May the tenth. And they were working with and reviewing the Stonebridge MOU, Stonebridge up on the Apekin, to take that over and maintain that property, which Matt M. State had been working on now for over a year. On the construction side, with, with our buildings, on the Dunn Building, we now have occupancy for the clerk's office, the assessor's office, and the fiduciary, the finishing drywall painting, and the ambulance authority. And tile begins today in the restrooms on the ground floor and on our second floor as well. Dave report, framing, exterior walls and interior will be completed within the next two weeks. Finishing up the roof right now. There is a delay on the electrical panels and the breakers, which may in fact push the entire project back about two months. So we may be looking at as late as October for occupancy, and that's strictly because of not being able to get the necessary products that we need.
I need some help from First Energy there, sir.
The criminal justice board meeting was canceled yesterday, and Commissioner Boyd and I have spoke, and I will now be on Landmark Commission, and he'll be coming off of that.
Got it?
The people who complained about the pickleball courts and the skate park, their sole concern was flooding?
Pretty much. I mean, that, that was...
Well, I mean, you know, what does it hurt pickleball if the property floods?
Well, it's my understanding by some of their comments was that the city had denied the church there from paving the parking lot because of creating additional previous areas there because of the runoff and flooding. Now the government's going to come in and do it, but they have somebody else to do it.
So they didn't object to the people and the noise?
No, I would say that totally.
That seems to be a big thing with pickleball.
The big thing was the water, but, but the next thing was noise from cars and kids. Their concerns were noted.
They have a public hearing, or just people showed up?
No, no, people just came to the meeting.
Anything else?
That's it.
I had three meetings, was able to attend two, had a conflicting time on the second one. First one was with Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority. They, they're still in the move of trying to acquire enough funds to complete the, the new station here in town. That's still in the works. They're going through Matt Malinex's group to help do the, help do some more of their grant funding, which they're working on it. It's, it's coming together. So it's going to be a great asset once it, once it makes it here to Martinsburg. Second meeting I had was the Airport Authority. Some of their budgets, they're, they're running very, very tight on it. There's a couple of the items that are down, and that's in, mostly in the fuel sales, Jet A versus Abgas. But they proceeded with the sale of the, two of their trainer airplanes to the flight school that they came into there. So they've sold those, I want to call them assets, but they're very expensive maintenance assets, but now the flight school has them. So with that, there was a, one other thing. But other than, like I said, some of their budget items are pretty close. So that being said, that was, that was the only thing I had, and I couldn't make it to the planning commission meeting because of the conflict with airport. I'm going to have to alternate those, those two meetings sometimes. Other than that, anything else?
We have a reappointment packet received from the following for Central Dispatch Advisory Committee. Steve Canby, his term expires on May the fifth, 2024. Chris Fincham, his expires on May the sixteenth, 2024. And J.D. Comingbird, his is May the sixth, 2024.
Mr. President, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we reappoint all three of those individuals into that board, please.
Steve, Chris, and J.D. I have a motion to have a second? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. And they'll be notified by letter. Then we have a reappointment packet received from Michael Height for the Roundhouse Authority. His term expires on June the fourteenth.
May?
I'm sorry.
May sixteenth.
Mine's sixteen-fourteenth.
We need to make a motion to re...
If you're ready, yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead, make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. We're running right on time. Mr. Will Lawrenson, fiduciary supervisor, estate hearing for Raymond E. Long.
Mr. President, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, as we say, we do have an estate hearing for the estate of Raymond Earl Long. Mr. Long passed away on February twelfth, 2024, a resident of Berkeley County. On March fourteenth, 2024, Gina Ray Zerung, the decedent's daughter and would-be executor in the incident matter, came into the fiduciary supervisor's office seeking to file a copy of a will in solemn form after purporting that a diligent search had been made to find the original to no avail. As this commission knows, the rebuttable presumption in cases where the, an original will cannot be found is that the original was intentionally destroyed by the testator and thus not a valid will under West Virginia law. To petition this body via a solemn form petition, as was done in this case, is the means to rebut that presumption. It should be noted that the will, in theory, provides for all heirs at law, the decedent's two daughters from a previous relationship, and his surviving spouse. All this to say, even if the will was not accepted for whatever reason, the same people would benefit from this estate in any event. Immediately upon receiving the petition, my office sent hearing notices to each interested party of the estate herein with an attachment of both the petition and the copy of the decedent's will. To date, no objection has been filed with my office. Without objection from any interested party in the audience here this morning, I ask for this commission's consideration to probate the copy of the will of Raymond E. Long in solemn form.
Hey, you've heard the information. Hey, you've heard the information. We have a motion to accept the will in solemn form.
Yes, we shall move.
We have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries. You want to grab?
Sure.
There you go.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay.
That was easy.
Yeah. Next up, Mr. Brian Ross, Community Development Director, Commercial Solar Farm Fees, Structure, Discussion and Approval. It's all yours.
Morning.
Good morning, Brian.
Little bit of history behind this. We have sketchpad approval and a preliminary plaque currently in here for Potomac Edison First Energy for a solar farm. In our current fee structure, on our commercial fee structure, whether it's a building or whether we calculate the impervious area, it's a base fee of $2.95 and .32 a square foot. Now, with that being said, with this project, when my engineering department spent time, calculated diameter, depth of holes for square footage, inverter pads, their inverter and relay pads, calculation, square footage and that, and we came out with a pretty astronomical number, to be honest with you. And we were in agreement with Mr. Butcher that it was a little bit, it was way out there based off of the time and everything that's involved to get this going. So I was asked to present something more reasonable. And I was like, okay, let's come up with something. And my engineering department and I, and we sat down and discussed the option of 1% of the total projected cost of the solar panel farm, which that ended up coming up just a little over $100,000, with it being a projected cost of like 11.9 million. So then we were kind of at a little bit of an impasse in not being able to agree. So I brought it to a couple members of the commission and legal, and we agreed we needed to come up with something reasonable, something that didn't overbear the project, but was reasonable and accountable for the work that was produced, the time that was involved, and what all this project entailed. And whenever it was brought to me saying, well, Brian, can you figure out your labor cost, you know, how many times you're going to be up? That's hard to determine based off of how the scope of work is going to be performed, whether you're talking 25 acres or you're talking 500 acres. That's kind of hard to determine. We're going to be, we're going to be doing our work based off of their scope of work. So we sat down and I came up with this proposal that is before you. Instead of using our base commercial fee of $2.95 and .32 a square foot, I came up with, I felt something that was reasonable for this project. And if you will look in your read ahead, I can get down, I can get down through it with you. We have, we would charge a base fee of $2.95 if it's under one acre. The reason $2.95 came up, that's our base fee for commercial projects and all our other commercial. For the first one acre to 50 acres is $1,000 an acre. For the additional acres of 51 to 100, $500 an acre. And for each additional acre over 100 acres is $100 per acre. That is based off of the limits of disturbance. So if it's a 50-acre lot, 25-acre solar panel farm, it'll be based off the 25 acres. Because there's going to be another, there's probably going to be some bigger projects coming through here that they may be phasing it over years. We don't know. So when I brought this, I thought it was fair. I thought it was reasonable. And legal was involved. I know I don't want to speak for Anthony, but I know they looked into some of First Energy's concerns concerning laws and what was fair or what was detrimental to the project. And I currently feel that this is fair for what we have proposed.
Did you check with other jurisdictions as to what they-
We checked around, the first fee that was kind of, that I said that was really, really up there, that was based off of one of our neighboring counties, how they did, how they did total square footage, they took circumference and depth of holes. They actually did the square footage off the arrays to come up with that number, which was crazy. And Loudoun County, they have a base fee and like five or six other fees on top of it. Sediment erosion fee, silk fence fee, project per project fee. And I'm like, I wanted to make it simple. I wanted to make it simple, no questions asked, very minute, to the point. A couple of other ones that the engineering department looked at, they were sporadic. There was really no consistency for saying, yes, pretty much everybody does this. So that's why I'm reaching out to you guys and I discussed with legal what we feel will be fair for projects coming into this county. And my department feels that this is fair.
Anthony, Mr. Butcher mentioned a couple of items that were possibly in legislature that, can you explain to me what he was saying?
And I discussed with their attorney that some of their concerns, there are some limitations on what counties can do specifically with energy production. So counties, cities can't ban any sort of energy production. Can't say, we're not going to have any coal-fired power plants, we're not going to have solar, or do take some action that would in effect do that. Similarly, just generally, under the building code, the fees are to be calibrated to what the actual cost expense of running your sections and department are. It's not to be an additional tax. So you couldn't just say, well, we're going to make it a $2 million per acre fee for a building code. That being said, there's nothing that says that the county can't, or that First Energy's not subject to the building code. These are new types of projects, so certainly it needs to be something reasonable, calibrated to what Brian's office is doing. As for my, I mean, I don't have any expertise on what that actually is, what they do, or but this, as it seems to me, seems much more in line with their office would do than 1% of the cost of a project or something.
So Brian, you did check with neighboring counties to see where they are in their fee structure?
Yeah.
And that, as Mr. Butcher had presented earlier, they are regulated by the public service.
Utility board.
Utility. Some of these companies are not regulated as a public utility, but this fee would apply to all.
Correct.
Across the board, whether they're regulated or whether they're not, correct?
Correct. My department doesn't differentiate unless we get something from the governor of the state saying, for example, look at it as a project.
Right. So you did the 1%, which a lot of times that is a number that's used when looking at different projects.
Correct.
And that was kind of through the rules.
That's Loudoun County. Get on top of-
Hey, Brian, in front of the mic.
Yeah.
If the public can't hear you speak, you need to get to the mic, Doug, if you're going to talk.
All right. Loudoun County uses 1% of the array cost, not the project cost, but the array cost, which is what we asked for originally. We asked for that number. Jefferson County is going with the traditional square footage. I think they actually used the panel.
But on an acre, what would their rate be?
It was extremely aggressive. I calculated it for this one, and it was north of $300,000.
One acre?
No.
Project.
For the project.
Say it for one acre.
Yeah.
For 33 acres.
If I took it, if I took our traditional building permit costs-
Okay, if you were using their rate on this project, it would be 300 and some thousand.
Based on our traditional commercial building permit cost. That's why I went out and said, that's crazy. That just blew me away right there. So then I went and started looking around. A lot of places were using that 1% number, counties, places out. So that was, the cost, First Energy gave me was 11.9 million, which was $119,000. I thought, okay, that's more reasonable, that seems reasonable. The only, you know, the only thing I can justify as far as our participation in this during construction will be, and that's where I want you to understand, is it's not just going out there and looking at a steel tubing placed in a footer in the ground. The entire area underneath the panels will be a stormwater BMP. Basically, that is designed so that it is a meadow, good condition, six inches or greater stand of grass, and it will need to stay that way forever. That's why they're not going to do a traditional stormwater management pond. You won't see that out there unless there is some sort of control issue. The BMP or the treatment for both water quality and quantity will be under those panels, meadow, good condition. They are going to have to make that grow, and we are going to have to go out there every week, two weeks, so we'll stormwater and inspect that. And I imagine that that's going to be a process.
Is that beyond the finish of the project or just during the project?
Even, that has to be maintained afterwards.
That'll be pre-doing it.
Yeah.
But do these panels move?
Yes, they articulate.
I was going to say, the grass is going to die if they don't move.
That's correct. Now, they're using this over in Maryland, they're using this over in Pennsylvania, this concept of the field being the BMP, it's being used in several places, it's working. I can take you right there and show you. And that's where I took, I do not have a stormwater ordinance for this type of thing, for an array. And I went out and did my research, and you know, it came from Minnesota, Pennsylvania, Virginia, Maryland, you name it. I took all those, put them together, and I made up my own, which is pretty much goes between Pennsylvania and Maryland. And that was, seemed to be the easiest for them, seemed to be the easiest for us.
Current fee is 33,000? Current fee is now going to be like 33,000? Is that what it is, or is it 100,000?
No, it'd be the 32,000.
Right.
Does this site pay any stormwater fee at all?
What's that?
There's no stormwater fee then charged to this site at all. Because it's only based on buildings and 911 address type thing. And of course, if it were like everything else, it'd be $42 flat rate. So that's what needs to be changed and corrected.
So it sounds to me between you and Doug that you've done your due diligence that we asked you to do. You went out, you've looked at this in multiple different ways, you looked at multiple jurisdiction on how they apply this fee, and this is where you've settled.
Right. And multiple discussions. We feel this is fair.
Have you discussed this with any of the people who are doing solar farms?
No, sir.
Have you discussed this with any of the solar farm people?
No, sir. I did not go out and actually talk to any of those.
Hmm. So Anthony, a question to you is, even though we don't have the ability to stop an energy producing situation like a solar farm, but in case of, you could raise the fees that would prevent people from doing it, in violation of-
That's what you can't do. Your fees have to be pretty much what you're putting into inspection and making sure that it complies with the building code and that it's installed safely.
So it uses a tool to prevent this from happening, but-
Correct. And I don't think that this, the way that this is structured is, if it was much higher, it could be. That would be something for courts to figure out.
Last thing my department wants to do is deter any project.
Where are we with the one down at the old DuPont property?
It's gone through, it's sketching.
And you're talking several hundred acres there.
And it's gone through its PSC approval as well.
Right. They got approval already. I read that in the Charleston Gazette.
They're not, they're not ready to start building like First Energy is, though.
I had a question for Mr. Butcher, if that's okay to ask him something. Thirty some third, 30 acres, in my sense of ignorance and understanding the solar situation, to produce a lot of kilowatts, you got to have hundreds of acres of panels. And what value does 33 acres of panels do for you as a company?
That is a number that I should, do not know the market value. Know that the charge is about, profit to us is about $40 a megawatt. But I have not seen the numbers on that particular site to tell you how many megawatt hours it will produce.
And that's used to run your operation at this particular site, or is that used to provide electricity for your constituents, your customers?
Yes. So there is a rate, a tariff rate, that is, it's a plus four cents a kilowatt hour. So you're used to your home, which right now you're paying about 10, 11 cents a kilowatt hour. There will be an additional charge of four cents per kilowatt hour if you choose a all or a portion of your electric bill to come from a green energy source.
The customer would have that choice?
They would have that choice.
Okay.
It is not, it is not put into blend.
Mandatory.
Right? It's not all going into blend. It's only for customers who choose a kilowatt hour, either residential or commercial. The reason the West Virginia Commerce Department went and lobbied for House Bill 583 was to entice out-of-state companies that have a mandate in their mission to have a certain percentage of their electricity come from a green energy source. So we needed to be able to provide that, and that's why we've built these five sites.
Mr. Butcher, you were mandated by the legislature to come out and build these solar farms, either on strip mines or brownfields, is that correct?
That is correct. It is in, it is in the House Bill that we have to use, we have to repurpose land.
But instead of providing cheaper electricity, those people are going to be paying more for the electricity. And it just seems ludicrous to me that that's what's happening, but-
Right. So I-
And I know you have no control over that.
I know. I speak to constituents. One family chose, they spent about $75,000, but a, to go solar, rooftop solar, plus the batteries, the backup, that. And they said, we understand it's, we're not got a profit margin here, but it's what we want to do for Mother Earth, and that's how we want to choose to spend our money. So that's their right. And as a, as a fully regulated utility with a captured audience, if you want a certain product, then it's really our obligation to provide you with that.
So this just doesn't feed into the grid. Power that you generate just goes into the grid, doesn't it?
It goes into the grid and will be distributed back out. We can't designate kilowatt hour when it goes to the, kind of like a drop of water coming out of the water plant. We can say, that goes to Fred, but don't go to Bill.
But once it gets into the grid, everybody has access to it.
Right. But the only way it gets in the grid is if someone is going to pay. We have customers who are accurate and say, we want this quantity of kilowatt hours. Okay? So the state gave us the ability to build 200 megawatts in total in 50 megawatt increments. So when we had subscription, we have been signing contracts, we get those subscriptions, so 85% of 50 megawatts, I tell the laws, written, we get to that level, then we go start building another, a grid. So that's, we got subscriptions, then we build, subscriptions, then we build. But we have folks out there, find their name on the dotted line, willing to put up the power.
And if they're willing to do that, are you going to plan on building more of these in Berkeley County?
The next one, I think, is scheduled in Tucker County.
Okay.
But I do not have knowledge after the next scheduled.
Oh, the ones in the-
Oh, the ones in the rest of the state bigger?
So the largest one is out in Montalee, on a piece of property that is, that we already owned, was part of a, a power plant in Fort Martin. You go to Morgantown to a football game, you look to the north, and you see that plume, that's a full-powered power plant, called Fort Martin. And we, the largest, which is about a nineteen megawatt.
In your all's research, did you check any of these other locations, of what, if there was a fee that they charged for these arrays going in? In West Virginia, like the one in Hancock, Mon, or anything like that, did you?
They don't have regulated buildings.
There was nothing there?
The local government were not, were not, but they don't have. I asked that question.
Those good things not allowed in county. You'd be paying a whole lot more.
Well, but in all fairness, they're, they're, they're a commercial. They went out, bought a piece of property, a lot of it, um, to, you know, make a profit for themselves. They, they did what they wanted to do. That's how they.
So Potomac Edison's not a for-profit company?
Potomac Edison is a for, they totally regulated. He only paid lots of West Virginia. But the individuals that we are getting, they want to. But they're going out purchasing like other than, you know, Emily Jefferson, and other counties. If they are just, were a regulated, they're not a commercial.
I thought solar power's supposed to be cheaper than the alternatives.
True.
Dealing with the same thing in the other parts of West Virginia with the windmills and all, it's a very controversial issue. And I don't know that this one would be as controversial because of the, you know, the environmental stuff on the windmills are crazy, killing the birds and different things. But, but the, the truth is, the investment on the windmills is not paying off in terms of giving cheaper electric to our customers at all. Takes a whole bunch of them to equal, come close to equal in one generator in a whole-powered plant, so. And, um, but I appreciate your honesty in explaining that to us.
Thanks for your time.
Great. Are we ready for a motion?
Sir, I'm prepared to make the motion that we accept the fee structure for commercial solar farm as presented by Brian Moss.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one name. All right, moving on. Uh, Chief Young, you're here for a increase of sheriff's department fees.
I am, good morning, everybody.
Good morning, chief.
Uh, I will be very, very brief. This is quite simple. Uh, just simply, in Captain Heckman's relentless pursuit of ensuring we're following the code with everything that we're doing administratively, uh, he's been notified of Senate Bill 240, uh, which passed on February twenty-ninth, goes into effect on June first regarding the fee, one of the fees that we charge for several different types of civil process that we handle, uh, that has been increased from twenty-five dollars to the amount of thirty dollars for uh, several different types of civil process that we take care of. Simply wanted to inform the commission, uh, make sure that you guys were aware that the bill had passed and the effects will go into effect June first.
When was the last time it was raised ever?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Probably at its implementation.
I was wondering.
It's been twenty-five dollars as far back as I can remember.
Well, does the increase to thirty dollars make a difference to you all budget-wise? Or should it be more? Or, I don't, you know?
Probably not. Probably not. It's, I, I'd assume it's just going simply along the lines of the nature of the beast of where we're at.
Oh, yeah. I, I don't disagree with charging more. I just wonder, is thirty dollars enough to make a difference?
Does that come back in our budget? It doesn't, does it? No, so it doesn't matter.
It's what, if I needed something served, let's say to a tenant, it's what I would pay them to serve that for me.
Correct.
I think it's very reasonable compared to what the, the private sector does out there.
That's why I was wondering. It seems to be rather cheap.
It does. I, I don't, yeah.
So are you saying the Senate bill then allows you to do this, or it mandates you to do it?
Allows. It's allows.
Allows you.
It's actually for your approval.
So it's our decision.
You can approve it.
Correct. It's, it's on your plate.
What fund does this money go to for you guys?
Oh, I'm not sure right off the top of my head.
You go back into, into your revenue. I mean, it's for the process of civil process fee, I mean.
No, Eric couldn't explain that.
It doesn't know that these fees stay there. These are elections and used over there. I think even there's some distribution that goes to the state, I believe. They get a piece of it, don't they? And it goes to deputy sheriff's retirement, gets a piece of it, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, there's a whole breakdown.
It's by code. There's no control.
Cannot remember what the private sector charges, but I, you know, this would be a legal question for Anthony. Well, I understand that, but is this considered in competition with the private sector? I don't understand, yeah.
I would do it privately.
And that's where I'm getting at, to be in competition. If it's, I don't wanna create a standard. I just wanna make sure it's under eligibility.
Whether I'm allowed to or not, I know, I know prior to this change with it being twenty dollars, they were in excess of double.
Be it. Yes.
Make a motion to approve the raise of, uh...
Please, the sheriff's department fees.
Sheriff's Department's civil process fee.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'm, you know, if you think it's enough.
I don't think we're allowed to go higher, are we?
No, you're not. It's dictated in that code that's in your...
Oh, yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed? Motion carries.
We are done now.
Thirty-five minutes. One minute to break.
Thank you.
How about that?
We're running on time today.
Yeah, man. Yeah. We're gonna take a quick break. Thank you. We'll be right back.
First one up.
In session, we have Chad Wyand Brenner, Deputy County Administrator for the firefighter shift trade policy. Got to get my glasses.
Thank you. I have Chief Roberts up here with me to present this. We worked on this together, so I thought it was important that we present this together. So shift trades are a very common practice in firefighting, and as you know, your firefighters work under an FLSA exemption that allows them to work a greater period of hours in their pay period before they earn overtime. That same exemption allows flexibility over that same time span for shift trades. One thing that departments have to do is have to write policy to control those shift trades to make sure that the expectations are met, both with the first requesting and the person fulfilling that trade. So Chief Roberts and I worked together and came up with a policy that's presented before you. We feel that it's a very straightforward policy. It outlines the expectations of all people from the fire chief down to the firefighters, how trades are handled. It creates the flexibility for the staff to be able to do trades without using their PTO, which is their PTO the majority of the time is opening with overtime. Is a overtime prevention measure. It also has no budgetary impact happening. So it gives the chief and the firefighters. They utilize an electronic scheduling system called Ladtech. That system is able of tracking these. How they are going to make sure that these trades are paid back appropriately. All the tracking is done electronically, so they can search, they can be queried, we can find out, make sure the compliance is built. And ultimately, the chief is in charge of accepting or rejecting those and trying to comply. Subject to your questions, I'll turn it over to Chief Roberts if he has anything to add.
I feel we, instead of having like a six month. Man's working for me today and I'm paying. That way and then also track, we're not trying to track all six months down the road that somebody did a trade today and then six months.
Has to be done within a one thirty day period.
I'll have to work for you and you will have to work.
With that thing of a pay period, how would that work?
They're different. About that FLSA period, that's what they're talking about. So it's in the period.
Okay, good.
Sure, I do have a question. If you don't set up the trade date at the time of the trade, what happens if they don't make it up? There gonna be disciplinary action?
So you and I would have to agree to that trade.
On what the other day is already?
When we submit it and then I have to.
That submission includes both of the dates. The date is being traded.
That's what I'm asking. When you set the trade, you have both dates already. You already know.
Yeah, okay.
Without saying, if you say, hey, could you pick up my shift today? I'm gonna get one of yours. If they don't come get one of theirs, then.
That's all pre-arranged before any approvals.
In the computer system that they spoke of.
Yeah.
I looked it over pretty intently. It's a good policy and thank you all for actually putting it in black and white. This policy's been done across the country for a long period of time. But it's the first time I've seen it in black and white. It was always been self-governed by the firemen themselves. The chief has always been notified of the trade, but they self-govern themselves, you know. If there's a problem, you know, it's always been understood that the policy leaves.
What's the city of Martinsburg do?
Well, I'm not exactly sure since I left in 2010, but we did not have a written policy, but we governed it ourselves. If I knew that Jim Barnhart did not repay the time that Commissioner Barnhart or Boyd asked for, then I knew that I wasn't going to ask you because I can't trust you to trade back. So it's governed within the firehouse and it works extremely well. It's a great benefit to the firemen. And I like the policy a lot. I think it's a fair policy and glad to see it in black and white.
So I said, to answer your question, I suppose you. I believe they have a book right there.
Electronically.
Eddie, you make the motion?
Sure. Be happy to make the motion to approve the firefighter shift trade policy.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Keep us, keep us up to date on how it works out. You know, just to some briefing personally, it don't have to be. Okay. Yeah. If there's anything we can help with to make it better or worse, let us know.
Well, we don't want to make it worse.
I don't either, but I just, I had to say that. Maybe I should say, maybe I could make it worse, but I don't want to, but. Follow up on custodial services RFP.
Yes. So on February 22nd, you opened sealed bids for contracted cleaning services. Those bids followed a mandatory pre-bid meeting. We had five companies show up, two submitted bids. We did a comprehensive review of those bids. We did find them to be competitive. We felt it was necessary to do a review for due diligence to make sure that we were appropriately spending the money where it, you know, should be spent and utilizing the taxpayer dollar effectively. What we found through that was that we have some opportunities in our internal service to be a little more cost effective. Your buildings are growing, the requirement to keep your buildings clean are growing, and so that is making the management of that service more complex. But through that, we found that we believe that we can maintain this service internal. We know we can maintain this service internal and offer a very high quality service to our buildings. You currently have, what is before you is my recommendation to reject all the bids that were received from contractual services and maintain internal. You currently have seven staff internal, split between six full-time and one part-time. Some of those, those staff are doing a great job. We've already began to do some restructuring. I'm very involved with them. We're starting to change some of the ways that they're going about their jobs. And in the future, we have some plans to take some open positions that are there and potentially hire a dedicated. Their daily. So you're looking at combining a full time. Those are FTEs that already exist.
I bet you'd be glad when the construction's done on this building.
This has been a challenge. I got to tell you though, I met with Lisa very early on when we did this and kind of explained some of the challenges we were seeing and we've noticed her in our office. She really took to the requests that we made. She's been in the office every day, you know, she just, she just needed to know what was going on. And not any, absolutely zero intent to speak poorly of how they were managed before because they were, they were in a structure that just was not able to grow and get into the buildings with them where they needed to be as the buildings were growing. They needed and need a leadership and management structure. Attent to be with them and doing the jobs. So there's some opportunities for cost savings internal. There's some opportunities to restructure other supervision and I would request reject those bids and.
So do we need a motion to reject the bid? Alrighty.
So you're managing this now yourself? And you're okay with it?
I am, yeah. For the foreseeable future, we are not going to rush into anything. We're going to make sure that we get everything we want it to be. When we go to find the manager, we're going to advertise, hire the right person for the job, but I'm.
And when you have a manager in the future, that personal answer to you?
That person will report to you.
Yeah, you know, the contracts that you've received basically have one person during the daylight hours available. Well, on a rain or snow day, one person cannot be at the judicial center here, the courthouse, the sheriff's office. You can't. So I'm glad that we're taking a little deeper look at this and we've got some dedicated employees that I just kind of hated to see, because we had our services prior, we went to contract, then we're back to ours. Now we're going to contract. I'd rather fix what we've got than start over and go with commercial services. I think that there's value here. I think it's a good point. Thank you.
Alrighty. I have a motion to reject the bids that were received. Two out of the five from, what was it, February 22nd?
Somebody.
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready? Next up, Mr. Wyand.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item I have for you is the request for proposal recommendation for the van, the passenger van for use at law enforcement. As you know, this is, this is a grant funded acquisition. We went out to bid and you received one bid on April the 4th. That bid was from One Nation Distribution LLC. It was for a 2024 Honda Odyssey at the price of $44,449. The paperwork that was submitted was signed by the CEO of the company with no contact information. We got on the website. There is no phone number to call. There is an email address. We submitted several emails, no response. So I'm recommending that you reject these bids partly because they're, they're non, that company was non-responsive.
So do I have a motion to reject the April 4th bid for a minivan from One Nation Distribution LLC?
Good move.
Motion to have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So you'll rebid it? What are you gonna do?
Coming up.
You want to know now before you finish the motion?
Well, he called for a question.
So it's my recommendation, if you remember, we exercised and presented to you about eight months ago, the opportunity to buy on the street and just get competitive pricing. So I'm going to ask for consensus that you allow me to do that once you go through this process.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
To that point, if I may get consensus from the commission to get competitive pricing as locally as we can and not to exceed $44,000 and buy something locally.
That sounds, I'm okay with that.
That okay with the commission?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Forty-four, forty-four, five?
Forty-four. Thanks, though. The other item I have for you is your property or your property and casualty renewal from WV Corp. So we're in that time of year where you're going to hear from me coming soon will be healthcare benefits and things of that nature, but this is, this is the first step. I presented you with a spreadsheet that kind of summarized where you've been and where we're going. There is an increase this year, net premium increase of about five, well, it's actually 6.24 was the gross premium. And then we've reduced the credits that we get back. So the total increase is 5.72%. We found an error in the payroll submission from the prior year. And as you'll notice in what I sent you, there's casual increases in some of the categories, but the biggest increase was in workers, not workers comp, was in payroll. And it, it was understated by about 2.8 million. So when we righted the ship with the correct payroll numbers, we saw an increase. The total premium for the year will be $990,035. It was $936,471, so it's an increase of $53,564. We're not going to find a better deal. WV Corp treats us really well. Mr. Whitaker's on the board and he can speak to you exactly how effective they are around the state. I summarized for you all of the different pieces and you can actually see, you know, what we're paying for that piece of all of our stuff, so.
I can speak to the point that whenever we acquire another county or another municipality compared to what they were paying and what they receive from us, it's tens of thousands less with sometimes better coverage because we have a, and Gary could attest to it, but our policy when it comes to fraud or computer cybersecurity. our policy when it comes to fraud or computer cybersecurity, cybersecurity, they offer a pretty good package, and you could look into it. I know we have our own umbrella kind of on that, but they also offer, that's included in our policy.
It's so, on the spreadsheet I sent you, you'll notice that there's a 33.3% increase on cyber risk. For the extra $5,000, we won't, it is a very large seven-figure opportunity, so pennies on the dollar for what it's worth. So it looks like a big increase, but it's only $5,000.
We've actually had other counties from the West Coast looking at our policy on our cybersecurity, on how they can get voted into it, but not by West Virginia Corp or VA Corp, and how they structured it at the Metis Office, and teaching other people on how to get it, better security coverage.
So of the $53,564 increase, $43,305 was workers comp.
Right.
So, and that's, that's all relative, and it's all actuarially defined by payroll, and of course... So I am very happy with the renewal offer, it is $53,000 more than last year, but I would highly recommend that the commission approve it.
We probably will be getting a premium credit pretty soon that's gonna offset some of that.
$18,290 is the dividend credit.
Okay.
I was in Parkersburg, I met Commissioner Couch from, he's the president of his corp.
Of the corp, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
Chris Carey is the director over the Organization for Virginia and West Virginia.
He's quite a character, yeah.
Blair, oh yeah, yeah. He's fun to be around.
And there's several other commissioners there that are serving. My question is, the coverage now we have on the sheriff's deputies, it's through that as well?
It is, it's the public difference liability.
Is it a million dollars per occurrence still, or is it higher than that?
I'll tell you in just a second.
I believe it is.
That was always the...
It is a million dollars.
Yeah.
Each occurrence.
Yes, sir.
And in the border risk all the years, it was at Parkshire Rec, the maximum was a million dollars, but the school, the school system had a...
An umbrella?
Umbrella, up to five million coverage on, on, on the single occurrences, and, you know, in Parkshire Rec thing, you worry about a drowning where a lot of the suits are settled over a million, and with, our biggest liability courses with the sheriff's department, and what could happen there.
And that's with the $5,000 deductible, so... Again, all of the, no changes to the policy for coverages or deductibles, it mirrors last year, minus, I'm recommending the additional cybersecurity number, it's $5,000 additional, 15 to 20, so if you don't want to do that, it's completely up to you, but I would highly recommend it for that.
I think it'd be money well spent. Only other statement that I would have is that this also includes the added value to the other buildings.
The buildings, it does.
That we increased on, so...
It does, so this includes the projected $10 million expansion to the David Center.
David Board Center, already included in there?
Correct.
Alrighty, do we have a motion to approve the renewal for the firing casualty through West Virginia Court property casualty renewal?
I would make that motion.
That's $990,035, is that what that is?
$990,035. Any further discussion?
Did you get a second?
No. Second.
There you go, second.
Thank you. Okay, now any further discussion? If not, call for the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed, motion carries.
I do not receive anything for being on the board, so there's no conflict of interest to this, you're not paying for my salary.
Alrighty. Any items from the public?
Oh, I do, I'm sorry. Yes, we do. Penny, thank you. I was looking at the red stuff.
I thought you were just wanting to read it first.
So just for, for information purposes, if you'll remember when CCAP was in here and gave their budget presentation, a nice gentleman came over and said, hey, Mr. Wein, started a discussion about a food drive. The conversation first was, how about a county versus city food? I'm like, no, we're not versus the city at all, how about a county and city collaborative food drive? So just for the record, it's setting in motion. Aleah, our new admin, is working hard with the city folks, Matt was involved, so look for some, some stuff coming out soon, there'll be collection boxes, haven't determined exactly which of our buildings, as well as at the city, so you're gonna be seeing some press where the county and city got together and did a food drive to support CCAP.
I've got one better, why don't we see what an elected official's office can produce?
No. That's me, Mr. Wein.
Well, Bernhard can use fresh produce from his spinach garden, we'd be in trouble.
He was talking about garlic today, so let's see what happens.
Garlic on our spaghetti.
That was just for information that it's moving forward.
That's a good thing.
It is, you'll start to see some information, and thanks Penny for not letting me skip it, but it doesn't have red under it, I gloss right over.
I think because of the weight of canned items and stuff, and I have a feeling these boxes are gonna be full, make sure they put them on roller carts.
No doubt.
Get them out.
Yeah. We've got, we'll put them on pallets, we got a pallet jack, have facilities go around and get it, but yes, sir, I can promise you this building will do very, very well.
I think so. Lot of generous people around here.
Right. That's it for me.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have any items from the public, or, not right now, but we will have an executive session? No? Bet you by golly, Wein, we're good? Mr. Bernhard?
Man, I'm, I'm just thrilled to death, I think I recessed here.
We are in recess, thank you.